Father, they're taking our rights from us.
That needs to be struck and out for that. That is just something that y'all put in there to control people. I'm just saying this, I'm not you, not you, not you.
But if they have all of this on their hands, it's not to them, it's to the students.
Yeah, I know.
Why does that have to happen?
You understand that that's silly, that's outdated. Silly and outdated. Y'all got laws on, laws on you.
If you would like to speak tonight at the public meeting, please make sure you sign up on a card so they cannot ignore you. If you're here tonight, please make sure that you sign up on a card to publicly speak at the meeting.
This will be brief. We should walk into the meeting room now. At 6:30, let's claim our seats and head in, okay?
Hi, I'm Helen Chen. I'm candidate for Collin College Board of Trustees and a college economics professor. In fact, I started my teaching career here at Collin in 2010. It was a wonderful place to work. Faculty and staff were clearly proud to be part of this school. Eleven years later, the change is dramatic and startling. Under your leadership, Collin's national reputation has been tarnished. Employees and students are frightened and paralyzed. Women and women of color are feeling targeted. The school's financial stability is being put at risk by needless litigation. Terminations and intimidation are driving away the excellent teachers responsible for so much of the student experience. It's clear that Collin College is in need of change for the good of the community, the students, and the employees. I urge you to right this ship. An institution of hard learning must be respectful of different viewpoints and allow dissent, discussion, and free speech. Shutting down voices that disagree with yours while disregarding public health experts teaches students the wrong lessons about civics, governance, and the importance of education. Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Henda. I'm a senior at Plano West High School and currently enrolled in classes at Collin College. I heard about the story about the contract terminations of Professor Heslip, Dr. Suzanne Jones, and Dr. Burnett. Although I did not know Dr. Jones personally, I know a few students that attended Collin and had her as a professor that appreciated her passion for education. From all that I have gathered about Professor Heslip, Dr. Burnett, and Dr. Jones, I knew that they were excellent educators who shared their concerns with the administration about reopening this school, however, were retaliated against. They had every right, as an educator, to be concerned about COVID-19. I myself, a senior in high school, opted to take my classes online because I understood the dangers of the pandemic. I hope that our trustees will do the right thing and inquire into the processes that led to these professors being fired. I insist that you take action to ensure that Collin College's policies are able to protect the lives of students and faculty as well as honor their right to freedom of speech, even when that entails criticism of the college's policies. That was a speech that I wrote before. I went to college and I saw what was happening. And it is embarrassing when we were broken up by the police. I think that this is a violation of our freedom of speech. And I think that these teachers need to be hired again. And just how we did on the pledge, justice for all. Thank you.
To become a public school teacher, I have to say that I'm deeply constrained by the recent actions of Collin College administration to fire not only one of my education professors, Dr. Suzanne Jones, but also two other professors that have been instrumental to learning care. I'm a member of the Texas State Teachers Association inspiring educators program at Collin College. This organization has been such a magnet to all the future educators pursuing an education degree. But being a member, we receive professional development beyond what we learn in our college classrooms so that we can be the most prepared teachers as we start our career. Dr. Jones is an advisor for this organization and has done an outstanding job bringing in speakers to help us grow as professionals. Just this past weekend, at the annual convention, Dr. Jones was named the advisor over here for the entire state of Texas. The Texas State Teachers Association is hiring educators program. Do you realize what an honor that is not only for her, but for Collin College? Is that the type of professor who thinks he should be fired? It is a shame that someone from this unit of first time, of others, beyond the college is a target of some type of strivers simply on the basis of her being involved in a professional organization. Instead of recognizing and appreciating Dr. Jones for her outstanding achievements in securing grants, professional development, and returning her first stance, and within numerous words, the Collin College administration is trying to fire her. As a Collin College student, I am a bold and disappointed in the administration trying to take away an amazing professor who is my mentor and for many others, for students. I strongly urge the board to demand that administration reinstate Dr. Jones and her colleagues immediately. If you do not, we will lose professors and students because we do not trust you. Our right to speech, free speech, do not stop when we walk on this campus. Free speech is the right for every American and shouldn't be hindered by some of the administration that don't like what is said. As a future teacher, my student will be taught that everyone has their own viewpoints and can be voiced those viewpoints because that is just one of the freedoms of living in the great United States. I sure hope I don't have to use Collin College as an example of how freedom of speech is hindered in the negative way. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and hope you do what you've been elected to do, and that is holding the administration responsible for your decisions. You are the one that approved contracts and you should do.
15 seconds.
I should not approve any contract unless they include all three professors that have already been hired and any others that the administration should require between now and then. Thank you.
My name is Gabrielle Stanis. I'm a county resident. Is that better? I'm a county resident and a proud Collin College alumni. However, I will be reading a letter written by a Collin faculty member who was not here due to fear of retaliation. Collin faculty have lost any voice we once had in shared governance. Our free speech has been turned into a weapon. Our workplace is damaging our health. First, we were offered no say in how the college reopened during a pandemic. Instead, we learned about the reopening of social media. Now, two faculty members who made it possible for us to express our apprehension have been terminated. Second, our college president has neutered the faculty council. The elected body that is supposed to be the voice of the faculty spends their time fighting over whether to even bring faculty concerns forward. Unfortunately, this body has been co-opted by and for the administration. Third, the council of excellence is on its way to joining the faculty council as part of President Mackin's shared government drive. Not only did the administration blow past the COE in the termination of our colleagues, but they have called on an outside consulting firm to reassess and so-called streamline COE's peer review process. When this administration says streamline, we should here take control over. The attack on our rights and dignity began long ago, but it's not too late for you to act. Stop being silent. If you continue to stay silent during this pivotal time, your suffering will increase and fear will win. So speak up, Collin. Join your colleagues in solidarity. You will find support from people who are as outraged, scared, and ready for change as you are and will find strength in numbers. And for the administrators, I know there's many of you in this room. You are good people. Many of you, for a long time, we can know as friends. I want you to know that Mackin's authoritarian leadership style is not a secret. We know that he screams at you in meetings. He berates you for transgressions and shames you publicly into compliance. We know Mackin likes to threaten his report to being fired and that he values personal loyalty above your own moral compass. Administrators, there might be another chance to dig yourself out of this and the retaliation that has become in Collin. Your subservience and refusal to support your faculty only drives the wedge more deeply between us. No one does their best work when they are constantly afraid. And the students are the ones that are going to suffer. Administrators, former and currently calling you to help us end this culture of fear. You can send in on those letters to editors. You can speak to the press off record. You can reach out to the Siah.org and submit a case. Please fight for the quality of our love in college and the quality of our lives. Thank you.
I'm also a parent and legal credit student here at Rome. The Dallas College Chapter of the American Association of University Professors, the DCA AUP, is a member chapter of the National AUP, an organization that for over 100 years has set the national professional standards for faculty with respect to academic freedom, tenure, and shared governance. Albert Einstein was a member of the AUP for over 20 years until his death. Like its parent organizations, the National AUP and the state level Texas Conference AUP, the DCAUP is very concerned by Collin College's president's decision to end the employment of a highly respected long-term professor, Audrey Heslop and Suzanne Jones, for simply exercising their professional rights to academic freedom and shared governance. Professional rights that have been jointly endorsed by the AUP, the Association of American Colleges and Universities, the American College on Education, their own Association of Learning Boards, as well as over 250 other organizations. Additionally, the DCAUP is concerned that the non-renewal of these professors may have been in part due to them exercising their personal constitutional rights as United States citizens to freedom of speech and freedom of assembly. The DCAUP stands with the National and State AUP in urging, in the strongest terms possible, that the Collin College administration, and if necessary, the Collin College Board and trustees, resend the non-renewal notices given to professors Suzanne Jones and Audrey Heslop. Texas Education Code 617.004, the Rights Work Clause, states "An individual may not be denied public employment because of the individual's membership or non-membership in a labor organization." Professors Jones and Heslop were told that part of the decision to not renew them was due to their membership activities with the Texas Faculty Association, a labor union. Faculty at public colleges do not relinquish the First Amendment rights and a government employer cannot terminate or penalize an employee for speaking as a private citizen. Collin College's own board policies require it to quote, "uphold vigorously the principles of academic freedom and to protect the faculty from censorship, as well as to uphold the rights of faculty and other employees under the U.S. and Texas state constitutions." Collin's board policy DGVA legal applies the First Amendment in the U.S. Constitution to its faculty and other employees when it states, quote, "A college district shall take no action abridging the freedom of speech or the right of the people to petition the board to redress a grievance." Similar statement is in GB legal for the Texas Constitution. Board policy DGVA legal emphasizes the right of Collin College employees to freedom of assembly, which is what professors Jones and Heslop were exercising with their membership activities with the Texas Faculty Association. I'm going to have another person that will come after me and will pick up the rest of this letter from the DCAUP. Thank you.
I am here at Dallas College, calling from the AUP. Professor Heslop and Professor Jones have been full-time faculty at Collin College for many years. The AUP maintains full-time faculty who have served at college for more than the maximum number of years with probationary term, not permanent or continuous tenure, and their service should be terminated for only adequate cost except in the case of retirement for age or under extraordinary circumstances. The DCAUP's position in that of the state and national AUP is that Professor Jones and Professor Heslop have been faculty tenure and therefore could not be dismissed, which is what their non-renewal is, with inadequate costs substantially indirectly related to their teaching and research and not under consideration of their red cards at home. Higher education's future is at a crossroads. As has become increasingly apparent, this case of the non-renewal of Professor Jones and Heslop is fast becoming a national test case for the future of higher education in the United States. If their non-renewals are allowed to stand, a message will be sent to the entire country that professors of public colleges and universities and in general, public employees of all types are not considered to be citizens of the United States with the same First Amendment protections under the U.S. Constitution as all other citizens. Repeatedly, our organization is hearing a rumor that the Collin College Board of Trustees believes it is not allowed to intervene in personnel matters. Let us put that rumor to rest right now. Collin College's own board policy BBF local, under number 58 in its Code of Health section, states that a board member will refrain from any attempt to influence any operational decision of the college district, including but not limited to individual admissions, personnel management, or purchasing decisions, except when such an issue is being presented for consideration at a legally posted board meeting. BBE local also states that the board has final authority to determine and interpret the policies that govern the college district and within the limits imposed by other legal authorities has complete and full control of the college district. And that an individual board member acting in his or her official capacity shall have the right to seek information pertaining to college district fiscal affairs, business transactions, governance, and personnel matters. Thus, as long as it is a legally posted board meeting, the board can get involved in personnel decisions. And in cases such as this, where the college president and his administration is alleged to be not following board policy and multiple state and federal laws, the board must intervene. Collin College's upper agency, Saks Talk, is Section 4.1 of its principles of reputation states that the governing board is the legal body with specific authority over the institution and exercises judiciary oversight of the institution. Increasingly, it is apparent that Collin College are increasingly an institution of higher education around the country. Administrations are working to recommend changes to board policies that effectively decrease the power of the governing board having to maintain all the control over their institutions.
I am the president. The candidate for Plano City Council plays age. I'm also a former student at Collin College and a model of a potential student. Thank you for giving me and I felt you suggest time to express our concerns over the stunning information that has come to light as we researched the last few years at Collin College. My memories of Collin College provide stellar education while also being an economical solution that has been shaken with recent events. One big question on my mind is why there has been so much turnover in administration and operations? There have been three CFOs within the last five years. In one case, a CFO and an executive VP were abruptly marched on college property on the same day. It is disturbing that many other administrators have left the college so suddenly and so quietly. It is widely suspected among employees that these former administrators lost their ability to come forth with important information because they signed non-disclosure agreements or NDAs. One issue which is of particular concern me as a candidate for public office is the practice of digging into the public papers to obscure what should be public knowledge. Recent public information requests show that in the last four months, the college has spent up to $14,000. I repeat that, $14,000, just to recall the identity of one elected official with whom President Mackin was texting regarding personnel matters. How much taxpayer money has been used to pay for NDA, severance agreements, and/or legal fees to cover up the activities of the leadership? Are you, the board trustee, in complete understanding and in agreement in all of these cases? What could the leadership possibly need to keep secret that is worth so much of the taxpayer money? As the fault within your fiduciary duties, we citizens demand that you, the board trustee, investigate this high turnover and its associated financial cost and regularly share your findings publicly if any of you taxpayers are interested. Thank you for the time.
During my PhD at the University of Texas, every day I walk in Garrison Hall, which is the home of the history department. Garrison Hall is in the shadow of the famous UT Tower, which is inscribed with a line from the Gospel of John, "The truth shall set you free." Sadly, at Collin College, speaking the truth can get you fired. This college administration was a fire-warm of most talented professors because she confronted one of the hardest truths about this nation and its history, that our past and present are deeply stained with racism. In 2017, I wrote an open letter published by the Dallas News calling for Confederate monuments to be taken down in that city. It was co-starring about 100 scholars, plerges, and thought leaders across the FED. Dr. Jones signed that letter. The two of us decided something. We did not want future generations of African-American parents, including our students, to have this one to their children by men who stole their bodies, who raped them, and auctioned off their loved ones, to be honored as heroes. We did not want future generations of white men and women to be poisoned with racist propaganda that made Bill and Ruth, who slaughtered a South Carolinian white congregation, a monster. Any cowardly bigot can mouth platitude about racism being bad. It takes someone of exceptional courage and character like Dr. Jones to do the hard work of dismantling racism. Yet for her efforts, Dr. Jones was recently told that her signature on the open letter was the reason she was getting fired, one reason. The excuse was, the faculty said factually, the letter said factually, that she worked here. A standard practice among scholars engaged in open public debate. Dr. Jones and I were ahead of our time. Since the letter, two Confederate statues in Dallas came down. A park was renamed, four schools were renamed, you know, countrywide or nationwide. 168 monuments were taken down across the U.S. in 2020. We have even NASCAR banning Confederate symbols. Now, this college administration chose to not exercise moral leadership on this issue, but can we at least keep up with NASCAR? Dr. Jones is a hero. Instead of being fired, she should be honored for her civil rights work. Reinstate her. Don't make this college innocent for fighting for a lost cause of her racist icons. Dr. Jones was right, the administration was wrong. Admitting this truth will set us free.
I am the president of Collin County. Last summer, for reasons personal and professional, I began tracking COVID-19 numbers below Texas and Collin County. I posted daily on Facebook explaining what was going on. I also developed a descriptive statistics assignment for my courses, producing numbers for Sundays between June 28th and July 19th. I was among the 29 faculty, including those trained in Department of Fiscal and Human Sciences, who worked through the college's approach to COVID. I also volunteered for the several colleges' COVID task force. It was with interest and some knowledge that I read Mr. Mackin's fourth emails sent to me June 29th in Office 18, concerning COVID in college. On Office 18, Mr. Mackin wrote that he was confident that we will continue to follow our facts to guide us where we're sitting, provide the very best service we're able to provide to those students who then entrusted us to do so. Would that that were so. In the previous paragraph of the same message, Mr. Mackin sought to put the death rate in coronavirus perspective, contending that the chance of dying in motor vehicle accident in the state of Texas is one in 103, which slightly over 1% is the same. That's over 100 times more than likely of dying from coronavirus. On that same day, the Texas State Department of Health Services revised the death total for Texas to 10,250, somewhat shy of the 10,988 deaths on Texas roads from January 1, 2017, to December 31, 2019, according to the Texas Department of Transportation. Texas was passed a three-year total on August 21st. As of yesterday, Texas was passing total of auto fatalities for the 12-year period between January 1, 2009, and December 31, 2020, with 42,995 COVID deaths and 41,618 travel deaths. While we will not have a number for a single year's COVID deaths until March 24th, the anniversary of Health Services COVID website, it is apparent that Mr. Mackin was off by at least three quarters of magnitude. He made no reference to prolonged thermals, problems with lungs, circulation, and nervous systems while he provided infection. Such an error cannot be considered to be allowing facts to guide college or due diligence. I expect better from my students.
I stand here in support of Dr. Suzanne Jones, Dr. Laura Burnett, and Honor Heslop. Distinguished professors, you do not deserve to lose your jobs for doing what this board chose not to do. For crafting a well-informed collaborative response to the COVID pandemic, for speaking truth to power. In solidarity with these women, I also stand here for the countless women faculty and staff at this college who can't stand here to say these things. For the women who risk losing everything through the simple act of appearing before you. For existing as women with opinions without power. But at the end of the day, while the faculty of this college may work for the administration here, they're not doing the work for you. The motto of Collin is noted by Dr. Mackin himself when he first started here, "It's students first." So the professors here shall every day do the work for them. And when an ice storm, or COVID, or any other unexpected change happens, the professors at this institution save late around weekends and work for them. So I'm not only standing here in support of these excellent professors, but for the students at this college who are better because of their work and the love they have for it. Which begs the question, who are we working for?
I appreciate you all coming to speak. My name is Leslie Cunningham. I live here in McKinney, and I'm a granddaughter who is a student at McKinney Boyd High School. I have to say that in the situation we have now, I would be kind of reluctant to recommend that she attend Collin College, you know, given the atmosphere of authoritarianism that you seem to have here and the disrespect for the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. I am also a member of the Texas State Employees Union. We have members all over the state at both state agencies and state universities. Our university caucus has been paying attention to what's going on here, and they're highly concerned about the implications for all higher education of the actions that you here at Collin College are taking. And our university folks have asked me to read a statement on their behalf. So we, the members of the Texas State Employees Union's University Caucus, stand in solidarity with professors Audrey Heslop and Suzanne Jones. TSCU is a 10,000-member union which fights for the health and well-being of all state employees and those we serve. Professors Heslop and Jones were fired for doing just that, advocating for their coworkers and students in the Collin College system. Professor Heslop and Jones's dismissal is a dangerous affront to free speech and freedom of assembly. Organizing to improve one's conditions on the job and membership in a union or professional organization are all protected under Texas law. And I think some other speakers have noted the specific laws that apply here. Especially during this pandemic, public colleges and universities should be working proactively with professors, staff, and students, and particularly their unions and professional organizations, to develop operating procedures that balance the college's core mission, public health, and economic sustainability. We, along with the Texas Faculty Association and countless members of the Collin College community, ask that professors Heslop and Jones be immediately reinstated in their positions.
... measures and to be part of the conversation. Many commented on being prepared to sign during retaliation to bid so anyway. We can infer that others likely declined to that decision. We recently learned that the board never received that resolution. We never saw the signatures and heartfelt comments from 129 verified faculty members. That's about a quarter of full-time faculty. There is a two-week period in the summer where most people were not coming into work. Yes, in an email from July 15th of last year, President Mackin wrote to all employees following custody, 20 faculty were moved at the new technical campus to a person all desired face-to-face courses to start in the fall. He continued, "I find it ironic that some of the chief proponents of closing our campuses and going fully online failed to speak to the faculty they were charged to represent." Not only did the faculty resolution not demand 100% online classes, it explicitly stated that while 100% online is clearly not feasible, the majority of classes could be safely and effectively moved online. President Mackin's misrepresentation of arguments and neglecting to share documents with the board suggests bad faith and intent to deceive rather than to trust the board to make decisions based on the facts. Why didn't President Mackin pass the... Why didn't President Mattkin pass the Faculty Council resolution onto the board if they were told it was going to happen? Why did the document painstakingly prepare through all the official and appropriate channels, signed by 129 concerned faculty members simply vanish before the board can see it? Why did the poll of 20 faculty members, less than 4% of the full-time faculty outweigh the concerns of six times that many faculty? These are questions you should be asking. Next, it seems that there is no virtual participation option for trustees.
You have 15 seconds.
Sorry?
You have 15 seconds.
Uh, there's no virtual participation option for trustees who are ill and who do not feel safe to be here, in person, or abandoned. The whole world has figured out how to conduct virtual meetings. The board should provide for it.
My name is Shannon Carter, and I'm a longtime McKinney resident. I'm also a faculty member at a nearby college who spent the last 20 years working closely with your students with a lot of pride, pleasure, and a great deal of pride. Your students transferred our programs and they thrive, and with your small respect to the board, that's your faculty at work, not you. People like Dr. Suzanne Heeslip and Burnett, and faculty like our own former students when they finished PhDs, got my campus, some of them end up here, and we are thrilled. We have always been thrilled, and now we're terrified and they are too. At this time, this current situation, I would keep on here, as is me myself, because I can't trust this administration, I can't retaliate against them too. Collin County matters to all of us, even to the people of this very region and to my campus, deeply personally and economically, and I do want to remind Collin County that our homeowners a few years ago, that we voted to pass a multimillion-dollar bond that would double the number of Collin campuses. Take a look at your property taxes and see how much they allocate for that. I don't have a doubt about any, but I have with that, and it's true now, and I want to make it clear, this is fundamentally exclusively a catastrophic failure in leadership. This is not a personnel issue. Three faculty members fired in this meeting are taking seriously the risks of global pandemics, or transparency for a chance to be heard, for caring. Collin County is at crisis point. Again, this is not a personnel, uh, it is a fundamental and catastrophic failure of leadership. I'm asking you, as we all are, reverse this catastrophe, damage to morale, increasingly your reputation, and take these professors to stand down. I am horrified if you're in and stuck out in the back room by all of us. I took the last statements and stunned this lead, as Collin County leaders all, to burn down this beloved institution, and we're out here wondering, what is your endgame, or when will it end? Uh, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, let's go, let's go. Uh, just days ago, before you fired Dr. Burnett, news wrote, "Collin County spent $14,000 to bury a text exchange between the college president and representative Leach." While Texas was suffering, the very same times Texas was suffering, fallout from a catastrophic failure, their leadership at the state level, Representative Leach threw her career job on Twitter, can't be messed up, we did it with the president of this university. That's press coverage that Collin County draws, and is that, which is what it's doing out of what I want, but by contrast, your faculty continue to draw the kind of coverage we all want for us and our institutions of higher learning. And in this case, it's not Collin College, it's Collin County, the accomplishment it could have been, but you fired this model teacher who last weekend leads out and receiving her walk-in paper. So I think five Collin County students from the Texas State Teachers Association, where she ended up, all of them ended up in top ranked elected positions. This is not a personnel issue, this is a fundamental leadership issue. Fix this, reinstate these professors, stop completely reverse the damage, and that is enough, because it's not about you, this is certainly not about Dr. Mattkin. And I'm going to close out. Okay. It's about our students, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Vasquez. I'm a former Collin College student who graduated spring after, in 2020. After I finished my time at Collin College, I transferred to the University of Texas out of Austin to study government. The reason why I came back and made a trip from Austin back to Collin County this week had to do with the unjust firings that this administration carried out. I personally knew Dr. Jones prior to firing her because she was the student advisor for my Students Demand Action chapter when I was a student here at Collin College. I can assure you that when she shared her concerns about COVID, it was in the best interest of the students and the staff here today and, you know, at the college. I strongly believe that Professor Heeslip, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Burnett deserved to have their jobs back. They clearly had their First Amendment right violated by this institution that, you know, claims to be a center of higher education. Furthermore, I will also note that all three professors who were fired were also women. Collin College by law, that's right, no, you're right, Collin College by law is prohibited from discriminating based on sex, which appears to have also been violated. Dr. Mattkin, would you like to tell everyone in this room why you fired Dr. Burnett? And specifically, after you had a conversation with Representative Jeff Leach?
Tell it!
Exactly. For everyone in this room who has heard, Dr. Mattkin spoke with his good old boy Jeff before he fired Dr. Burnett. I will actually read the transcript for everyone here so they'll know what he said. "Dr. Burnett is paid with taxpayer dollars," correct, Leach said. And then Dr. Mattkin says, "I'm aware of the situation, Jeff, and he will deal, and will, and will deal with it. Already off my radar for the current issue." "She's definitely paid with tax dollars," he continued. "Okay, cool. I'm getting calls from folks, not a ton, but a few, as it started to percolate on social media," Leach said. And then Dr. Mattkin replied, "My inbox and the board is getting the same," Mattkin replied. "Appreciate you, good luck in November, friend." For everyone who sits on the college floor, may I ask why? Why have you fired Dr. Mattkin? How much D R and H R damage does Dr. Mattkin have to be responsible for before we have to say he has to go? Is this college board satisfied with being ranked in the top 10 nationally for the suppression of free speech? As a Collin College alumni, I'm not surprised, only if disappointed. I believe that this college board has an obligation to the public to reinstate the professors who were fired, just like the three females who were fired based on sex. It's simply the right thing to do. In my opinion, Dr. Mattkin is the only person in this room who should be fired.
I think you pay attention and give respect to speakers, that he's not looking to anybody, and pay attention. You're an educated group of people following a man who is misogynistic and felt he was too high up to be questioned by strong, educated women who are indeed right. Your spewing of conspiracy theories is beyond disturbing, and I wonder about your mental state. Board members who all just sit idly by while Mattkin removes baby professors is extremely disappointing, shameful, and inexcusable. You stand up for your professors against a dictator. You don't power. Mattkin, what is, what is it about freedom of speech that you don't get? You just don't like it when it doesn't follow your turning agenda and women stepping up to hurt your ego. If anything, Heeslip, Jones, and Burnett should have their job. Mattkin, you need to go. And you're raising rates to attend this school when you're throwing out exemplary professions, professors, and taking them away from students? Absolutely not. This is from a teacher, a professor that is too scared to speak because of Mattkin. Dear Collin College trustees, I'm writing as an extremely sad and frustrated faculty member at Collin College. The events of the past year at the college have been very disheartening. As faculty, we have collectively risen to the occasion to serve our students under extremely difficult circumstances, developing new courses, adapting to new modalities, and treating our students with compassion and respect as they suffer, along with the rest of us, the devastating effects of the pandemic, financial challenges, and an uncertain future. As such, it would have been nice to feel that the college administration and board trustees had our back, and we're committed to our health and well-being, and to treating us as faculty with the same compassion and respect with which we approach our students. Unfortunately, this could not be further from the truth. President Mattkin has treated faculty with a dismissalness in this regard that has been truly shocking. From declaring the pandemic to being overwhelmed ahead of time when a real leader could have taken steps to protect our community and reduce the risk to the county that we serve, to ignore the science-based Faculty Council document signed by 130 faculty members to bury in the COVID-related death in our Collin Iris meetup, 22 paragraphs into a happy Thanksgiving message. So gross. President Mattkin has shown the faculty exactly how little he values us other than as warm bodies in the ever-growing number of buildings he rules over. So it should not come as a surprise to me when I heard that he had instigated the non-renewal of the contract of the professors. Because of the president's choice to portray the faculty to the board in a manner that best suits his agenda, you may not have seen the document that so many of us signed last summer.
Ms. Brooks, time's up.
Should be ashamed of yourself.
I live here in Collin County. I'm a taxpayer of this county. Thereby, I support the education, the public education, that is paid for by taxpayers and by property owners in this county. And I stand before you there, not by myself, but with those that have come before us. Those freedom fighters that have fought for truth and justice, that have fought for sacred rights. These sacred rights include a freedom of speech, the freedom to assemble, and as these professors have done, the freedom to organize in their place of work. The freedom and the right to safety. These are inalienable rights that I have to wield them. It's frustrating. In the 21st century. And finally, the issue of academic freedom. The freedom to say what you believe without fear. I lived in Germany. I know what the Gisshoffel used to do. This, what this board is doing, shutting down the freedom to assemble and organize, is no different. This conservative ideology that is being represented by this board is frustrating. I moved to Texas, and I've been told multiple times, honey, attracts more bees than vinegar. I don't count you tonight, but honey, I count you out of anger. A 45-minute drive to come up here. You are embarrassing us, not just in this nation, but in this county. This is embarrassing that these professors have been fired in our home, right here where we live, where my taxpayers go. I was looking at the board of this college, bankers, business people.
You have 15 seconds.
Where is this institution represented by educational professionals? I leave you today demanding that you reinstate these women's jobs, and I demand that if you are not a professional educator, step down and resign from this board, all of you.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I just wanted to come and say that, you know, for myself, well, I won't introduce myself, I'm just a COVID student, I'm running for place nine, with board trustees, Collin College. And I just want to say, you know, growing up in a single-parent home, the youngest of six kids, the only dream my mom had was to have a kid to graduate from college. She wrote two jobs. So I know strongly, I've seen it all my life, you know? And it wasn't until I got older, where I went to a community college, where I earned a degree, where I was able to believe in myself, take care of my family, that I went to Texas Women's University to get a degree in government and politics. And gentlemen, ladies, for a doctor who taught me in government, the actions of this board, the actions of the school chose a declining form of government, a declining form of governance that has to be somewhere where board can take in faculty concerns without being afraid, being afraid, scared. Sounds like these teachers are getting PTSD working here. And it should not be that. I would not have my master's degree if it weren't for teachers like Dr. Jones, Dr. Burnett, and Heeslip, because they took their time to help me change my social imagination, where I can believe that I can get the American jury. See, some people say you got to pull yourself up by the bootstraps, but right here, I'm taking, I pull myself up by the bootstraps, because I'm not supposed to be here. I'm not supposed to be a statistician. Education is the key, and you are another education is the key. And if you're controlling the education, you're controlling what the teachers say, you're controlling freedom of speech, you're controlling the minds of the students, and as a parent who has a child, I'm not happy, I'm not happy as a parent or taxpayer. So that's why I'm here, because we're going to make some changes.
Honorable board members, thank you. Is that better? Honorable board members, thank you for taking the time tonight to hear these concerns and complaints. It's your last time to express all my own concerns, and I appreciate the community coming out. Uh, I mean, I can't help some of the passion that a lot of people have here. I, I want to speak to you and reason the board correctly, though. This is not a right-wing, left-wing kind of thing, and there's a lot of people on the left side over here, but I know I've been very conservative around Collin County private, and there are a lot of people with conservative views that are concerned about what's happening here, with respect, not just to First Amendment, but to the right wing, word. Academic freedom is a special right afforded to, uh, not just faculty, professors and professionals in many different fields that go above and beyond just their standard version of the rights, it's the right of dissent, it's the right to be able to be involved in the decision-making part of this institution. So academic freedom is something that is part of what makes a professor not just a mere teacher, but a professor, because that academic freedom transfers not only to their research and into their working on the job board, but it's also in their shared governance, where they could stand firm and hold a position that might be something unpopular, that might be something that might be a dissent, but it still needs to be in the public consciousness and as officers of the college, which they are, Supreme Court has ruled that they are decision-makers under, of this college. It's embedded into your tax accreditation, Section 6. Faculty members, read Section 6 of your accreditation. They have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, to the board, as well as to the CEO, to give forward that information without fear. And you can hear it, and I know it, because I know many friends that live at Rockwell Academy and many colleagues in education that tell me their friends are scared. You should never be scared for anybody to come and teach a class or to express an opinion on a panel. If I come in here and say something, and I'm a faculty member at Collin College, I'm not. But if I was, the safest place for me to express it would be right here, because there's no attribution. I guarantee academic freedom right here at this podium. I should be also guaranteed that academic freedom, whether I'm in the academic senate or if I'm standing before my colleagues expressing concern about COVID or anything else in the textbook case. It should not cost me my job to speak my mind as an intellectual. Thank you.
You have 15 seconds.
Thank you. I do have some other concerns. I'll bring them up, because I think I'm going to keep attending meetings, and I appreciate the decor that you've had. Thank you.